Points of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, I got a couple of people Zoom land and we have folks here. So let me introduce the board and the folks that are up front here. That's Kim Burkett, our remote facilities coordinator. Karine Hatch is our recording secretary to the rear here. Board members tonight present are Tim Schneider, Mark Tolbert, Amanda Van Laken, I'm Chuck Euler. Kristen Smith is our zoning officer. Eric Cooper is representing MRB, our town engineers, and Chris Nadler is our town and board attorney. So we're going to go through the agenda. We have agendas out front. If you didn't get one, they are free. We won't charge you for them. And you can follow along. We're gonna try to, we should, no problems for us following the agendas published because I don't think we have any, hopefully any surprises. And I want to announce that there are no, oh, there was two legal notices published for tonight's meeting. For the two public hearings, we have regarding extensions of the special use permits for the short term rentals. So they have been barely advertised in the November sixth minutes or legal advertisements of the data messenger. Okay, probably to the floors, the first item on the agenda. If anyone here is representing or wants to discuss any item that's not on the agenda with the board, now would be the time to do so. So whether you're here or out there, anyone have anything to bring to the board's attention? Okay, if not, let's move right into the agenda. First item of business is CPN twenty twenty five oh sixty seven. Anthony Valencia representing a property owner at twenty three fourteen Brickyard Road. This is a continuation of a subdivision, so I'll reopen the public hearing and. Good evening, Mr. McMillan, right?
Yes.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
All right, so what's new? I think you went through the ZBA, did your thing there. You got your variances. So we're back to playing board for the actual subdivision.
Yes.
Um, do you like to say?
Yeah, we're trying to establish two one acre lots out front. You can see them there on the map. Anthony put this together in the survey and everything and. The rest of the property will remain intact with the present owner, Alfred Dukowski.
Okay. And as I said, you got your, with your lot area and your lot farm variances from the setting board.
Yeah, there's not much we could do there. See, there's a pipeline that goes through. Their property and that big, there's a big pond south of the pipeline there.
And I think in their deliberations of ZBA felt that the lots being created, even though they were smaller than a two acre minimum, they sort of conform to what else is on Brickyard.
Yeah, we did some across the street south. They're building some houses now. We put some lots in there as well. They were one acres also.
This is right across the street from the entrance to the Gulf of.
Well, it's close.
Okay.
No question.
Yeah, I was gonna open up to the board.
Does the positioning of that pipeline in any way restrict access from that remaining front?
Question was, does the pipeline restrict access?
Access. So, so the remaining lot, the large lot.
That's it. The driveway's up further. It doesn't show in this.
Oh, okay.
So you see, it goes, it goes up further. There you go.
That pipe is also like twenty feet deep. So you can cross it. It's, it's very deep and the access is only a easement across if they have access to go across it far. They do whatever they need. Just kidding. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. I guess, and I'm not sure if you addressed that in the resolution, Eric. Will be a waiver from the chapter one seventy four for the lot depth, two times the road width. I guess we should acknowledge that we'll be granting that waiver and I think it was.
I think so. For the main lot or the two lots?
For the main lot. Yeah. Again, I, I don't think we have an issue with it, but we just want to make sure that it's reflected in the resolution. I think the resolution does contain the referral to the ZBA variances that were granted. ECB thought they were good with the one acre lots and they recommend approval. Uh, the county planning board asked why lots two and three are so small. I think that that's been. Discussed and resolved and asked and answered. So I think that's to conform with the existing lots on Brickyard. And I committee, they never got to this, I don't think, because their meeting was canceled. I think that was probably it. Jim Fletcher said that there's good site distance, which I think we all agree. I think the site distance is shown for the potential location of the driveways. On Brickyard. HTO is Canada against Farmington, the water lines. So have the issue with that. The NRI features were shown and seem to be avoided for the most part. Anthony, the setback lines you're showing for the one acre lots, are they the AR two setbacks? Okay. Just want to make sure, even though you got relief for the lot area, the setbacks at the AR two.
Maybe actually the rest of them.
Do you have a meets and bounds for the, uh, this suck, uh, this gas pipeline is the one in the lower left hand corner. You show that you show up.
There's a library paid, there's no specific meets and bounds that goes back to that. So you can apply, you can provide a lot of things.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a thirty foot right away or a fifteen foot, either side.
I don't think it calls it out.
All right. Check that. Okay. Uh, that's all I got. Anybody else have anything?
No.
Uh, anybody in the audience want to address the board regarding this application for twenty three fourteen Brickyard subdivision? If not, we're ready to move, I believe. Uh, this will be an unlisted action since she does a subdivision for seeker. I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution to classify this an unlisted action under the seeker. And that we received from the applicant, part one of the assessment and we have supplied through MRB our parts two or three. And is the board in agreement with that? Second time. Okay, got a second for discussion on the seeker. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, moving on to the actual subdivision review. Somebody want to handle that? I think we got a couple of added conditions. And if once we get the motion, we'll get the conditions.
I'll make the motion for the single sage subdivision, flat road, this is CPN twenty five dash zero seven twenty three fourteen Brickyard.
Oh, yes, sorry, the six plus. I only caught the one about the library page and details about the pipeline easement. Is there another one that I missed? I don't have another, yeah, seven conditions. And then the waiver, which was the strong of.
The where.
Whereas portion.
That'd be in the whereas. Okay.
I'll second.
You got a motion, Mark, a second from Amanda. Let me throw the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you, Mr. McMillan for.
We have two new houses coming already.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Congratulations.
See you again.
All right, next item number two on the agenda, CPN twenty twenty five one thirty five. Uh, again, it's Anthony with Mobile Road. Uh, tell us what's happening up there.
Yes, we did a little bit of a modification of the site plan. Do you want to pull it up? Originally, we are showing the mobile road, we'll just call it mobile extension for now, as coming and veering a little bit more. South closer into those two lots and we were going to do a private drive to, to access the two. To access these two lots. We've done some revisions of the larger plan that you guys will be seeing here in the, in the next couple of months to bring mobile road straight in and then tie it into the, the future road. So we got rid of the private drive and it's just going to be that, the mobile road that comes in there. We're going to offer that hammerhead. As an emergency vehicle turnaround. So we're going to widen up the road a little bit to get, um, to be more in with with. Um, fire apparatus with, but at, at this point, we are asking the planning board to relieve the dedication at this time. Um, we've talked with Jim and Mike at the town and at this point with the future development. Going to be coming in and dedicating that road and get everything done and dedicated. And then futurally, future starting that project, that's going to be the main access into that project. And the road will inherently, if it is paved and dedicated, you know, it's going to just cause issues down the road. So we're asking for that waiver to not dedicate the road at this time. Get it to be a gravel. Um, with wide enough for fire apparatuses to get in there. There's a fight. There is a hydrant at the end and that big hundred and twenty. Foot wide turnaround will be put in as far as this project and then it'll be dedicated at a later time when that project is underway.
Wait, say that just mobile road will be.
It's part of the larger project that will be Mr. Gianneco's development plant.
I wondered why Jim used the word right now.
Yeah.
Right now. Um, so. The turnaround will go away and.
The turnaround is, the turnaround is on the actual planned road. That's part of that. That's why it's got like a weird curve in it.
Yeah. Okay. And so it'll continue.
North.
Under Purdy.
Yeah, it'll, it'll come down.
Or into the new development.
Into the new spine road. That is, the, the road is going to come up through here when they travel on from Purdy. So that is, that is just an extension and getting that in. So we're not redoing things and regrading and taking that tied up as they're going. But that's going to go on just as a temporary turnaround for vehicles, trucks, things like that.
Is it planned for mobile road to be upgraded as part of the new development and dedicated?
Correct. So mobile road will be dedicated to the town as well as the main artery that goes from Purdy Road to town line.
Okay, but we need to memorialize that in some sort of fashion. Uh, yeah, it's just not referring to the minutes of tonight's meetings, you know, that's so, I think it should be it. Uh, Anthony, aren't we essentially revising the site plan? We have, because originally.
The revision of site plan.
Okay, so it's more than just changing that condition.
We revise and then the condition.
And asking for condition nine and ten, I guess to be.
Doesn't that also require a variance at that point catcher on a, we've got multiple, multiple unit, more than three units on a.
The two lots are already approved. So we're not creating two lots. Two lots are already approved. We're just going to put a building on it.
This is site plan. Yes.
Yeah, but those two are already approved.
If it was a new street, new road, I, yeah, I, yeah, I'd have to, it'd have to be dedicated now, but I think the fact that it's to be dedicated.
Right.
Uh, it'll, and improved.
What, what forces that? What forces that work to ever be done?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Unless you condition it. Or even then.
I think the original intent was to make sure that you get.
Get it improved and get it dedicated.
What's your timeframe on both projects, Anthony?
Uh, BME is working on coming in with a sketch plan the next month or two. Kristen, we have had a couple of meetings that Kristen's been aware of that. So.
When are we, when are you building Mobile Road?
Mobile Road will be used as a construction.
No, I meant, sorry, lot seven and eight, those will be sold and built any day.
The first lot seven is going to go as the trailer that is in front of Stella's that we want to move.
Okay. So that's going to go.
This site plan. Good idea about how to. Ensure.
Can we get, we'll get the lot seven approved so we can get this moving and get the family that's been waiting for it into this building and then you hold up lot eight and don't give us lot eight for. Then hold that against us.
You could give them a, you know, by.
Or a G here window.
Twenty, twenty six would have to be dedicated.
Right. As I'm going through with Jim, he does not want to take it until we know what that project is going to look like. And if we go in and we open it up, pave it and do all that, it will be, it'll be susceptible. The town will have to take it over. Plow it and he just doesn't want to do it at that time because it's not necessary. The road is wide enough for, for fire apparatus. We're gonna, you know, it's, it's a level, clean road. It's not, it's not like it's some.
Well, you see Mike Murphy's comments.
Mike Murphy was a fan of this. He was okay.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think anybody's saying you can't do this or you shouldn't do this.
Just how?
The board, so I see what you're saying. Let's just, if we just approve lot eight with the conditions that prior to. Or lot seven, lot prior to lot eight.
Being a building permit applied, then we have to have it dedicated. No, not anytime sooner.
That would at least kick the can down the road because. If you get, if you approve this, they can just build lot seven and eight and then you can't withhold the building permit if they've got an approved site plan. So yeah, let's do that if that makes sense.
Or you can tie it to, you know, their development. But that's on the come. You don't know whether.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They could never file.
I mean, if.
You said it's coming.
It's coming. I mean, there are hoops and things we have to jump through and plans, but as part of that mobile road, we're, in order to get a building permit for the first tunnel, that's going to have to be dedicated. Technically.
Along with the spine road, yeah.
Unless they come in, I don't, I mean, that right now is just one of those things. We're just trying to get this to move forward so we can get that, you know.
Let's just figure, let's, but it's possible that complications arise that you're not going to be building that anytime soon. So let's.
Well, and we can. We still have, we still have two things. So last week when we talked about this, it was, it was to move that building off of where it is to get it out of there. So now I'm hearing that we have somebody that wants to move into it.
There has been somebody that wants, that has had that held for the last like six to seven months to get eliminated.
The second thing is when we did connect with Mike last week, he was not in favor of making an exception. To find a creative way to do this. And I don't have anything that says that he's now okay.
You're looking at Mike's comments. I said, there's. Again, do you see Mike's comment?
I think I was in a meeting with him and he didn't know this comment.
You see Mike's comment?
I did not see that.
Okay. It's pretty extensive.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we can add more information, but I mean.
Can you bring it up? The road improved to a certain, beyond what it is now. Right?
So you must open tell. I mean, I'm generally okay with it. I mean, that it's, it meets the conditions of code enforcement.
Mobile Road will have to be expanded to a minimum of twenty six feet width. This is one of Mike's bits. Okay.
I can do that.
Road will need to be paved, oh, road will need to be paved or concrete.
Was that a new one?
Twenty, twenty FC NYSD one oh two point one and five oh three point two point three.
Looks like these comments were given on seven.
Hammerhead shall be sixty feet or more in each direction. Please show performance. This needs to be a permanent turnaround, applying with twenty twenty FC NYSD one oh three point four. Please identify. That seems to be it from code enforcement on the road. Oh, wait, this is over here.
There, see, he's got a signed request and he's got. He's looking for some plan stuff that really, he's looking for a concrete lash out.
Yeah, we can add this. I can add those.
But paving the road.
I don't know about paving the road. I can't say for like, you know. I just, to be honest, I don't see a utility in paving it.
No, it's, he's, I think he's saying that twenty twenty FC NYSD one oh two point one and five oh three point two point three require it.
And then shot.
Just try to work it out.
His email to.
Go work it out.
Mr. Jim, sit, you're, to your org is where that, he just said he recommend the planning board continue the application until he applied sufficient detail and plan revisions. To comply with my comments, too many openings exist and they change the character of the plants. So that was an email from Mike. I'm from Chuck, Kristen, Jim, myself on the web. Along with his comments.
And these are his comments.
So the most up to date comment is. Please give applicant a response, a chance to respond and don't permit until they've had that chance. Is that accurate?
I think that's what he's saying. Yeah. He wants these addressed before. We'd get his endorsement. You're going to need the application and a lot of them are, it's fire issues.
You okay with that?
I don't have a choice, do I? I'm not going to fight you.
We're not even. They're all about it.
Well, I mean, you know, we had comments and I was talking to Mike. We had multiple conversations and then you get just. I don't know. It's pretty standard these days, but I guess this one is. So I guess we're tabling it for two weeks.
Yep. Uh, the other thing, Anthony, where the, where mobile road intersect the spine road.
Correct.
I know when we were doing the subdivision, there was concern about not having that intersection on the curve of the spine road unless the spine road line was changed. Where would that intersect the spine road once extended?
On the curve.
On the curve. Okay.
There's just not a lot of room in there.
No, I know.
It's going to be at an intersection instead of.
I mean, the good news is you don't have the shared driveway, but I guess what you're doing is actually pushing mobile road up further, which is bringing it out on the curve, as you said. So just kind of have to look at that from a traffic standpoint. That's where that intersection occurs.
It's going to be a, a four way intersection. So it will be offset. So there's going to be.
With a local road from across the street from.
Going into the total project.
Okay, I would, I would suggest that you get this, you know, sit down with Mike or talk to Mike about it and say, you know, what do you need? And oh, we need a letter from Mike endorsing the, endorsing the change of the plan.
Okay.
So you are going to provide the sixty foot right away. That's still, that's still in the conditions, right? Okay. Uh, you're asking that the dedication actually be deferred. You've moved the water line too, right?
Well, I've just changed it to be on the, the main line now.
Okay.
So.
We're looking at revised site plan and we're looking at revised conditions and we're, to do that, we need the approval of. Mr. Murphy. Okay. We'll see in two weeks. Do I have motion to grant the extension or grant the conditions?
There you go.
Okay. So we'll continue to the twenty fifth. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay. Turn the page. We're over to CPN twenty twenty five oh eighty five. Christine Brown is here. Is it?
No, it's not me.
Someone here?
Wrong place for me.
I expect her.
A little later.
Uh, forty five seventy five Middle Cheshire Road. Requesting a continued survey special use permit to provide for a tourist home, which is essentially a bedroom and a bath in her home. Uh, on Middle Cheshire.
Checking the door again.
Starting to wonder if there is a Christine Brown.
Not. I, I told her after the last meeting, I spoke with her and she wrote it on her calendar while we were on the phone. So I'm not, oh, oh, jerk messages.
She's not online.
He's not wanting to do online.
Yeah.
Okay.
She, she's not in person. In person, first? Yes, sure.
Well, we can continue or deny. We.
This is. The third, second, second?
At least a second. It could be a third.
I don't know. We are. It's the second. We haven't really said goodbye to anyone because of that, but.
I'd say don't call. Send a letter tomorrow. This is your last chance.
And maybe put it to the December.
I mean, the next meeting is right before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I was counting, I was counting last week too, because she couldn't come last week.
Right.
She had to, we moved her this week. So that, that was three chances, but okay. All right, we'll do it. Give her a last chance, three strikes you're out. Uh, do I have a continuation till, what are you going to do, next meeting or December?
December? December meet?
She didn't, she didn't make, come December then.
Yeah. December meeting.
Ninth.
Or there's only four.
This may not be.
Four, yeah.
Okay, let's.
Uh, so moved.
December ninth. Continued. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Uh, now I'm going to stop in a hearing for CPN twenty twenty five one ten. Uh, Mr. Burliner, uh, four forty four, ten Middle Cheshire Road. Um, he received a special use permit to operate short term rental in his home. Middle Cheshire or a home, a property at Middle Cheshire. Uh, it was a one year's permit and the year is expiring. So we're back to visit the special use permit. Uh. It's got nice weather. Hi Brett, how are you doing? Hi, good. Okay, uh, this is renewal of your special use permit for your short term rental. Apparently. It's been no, uh. No issues with the property. I think we got off to a little bit of a rocky start, but then I think. Uh, through the balance of the year, uh, code enforcement's been happy. I assume zoning's been happy.
Yeah, we went and did an inspection.
Okay.
Um, and everything still looked good inside the house. We brought up a few. Issues that were associated with a complaint that we did get and they were pretty proactive in solving the problems, taking the property. Um, and the complaints that were received were, um, not found to have any violations by our town.
Okay. That's good news. Uh, board have any questions of Brett?
Not.
Okay, well, in that case, uh, looking at the extension. Uh.
Sir, you will get a chance to.
Looking at the extension, um, we're, the way the condition reads for the extension is shall remain in effect for the current owner of the premises. And or operators with no requirement for renewal, provided the user remains in compliance with the conditions of approval. So what we're saying is long as Mr. Burliner owns the property and he does not change or have any issues. Resolving that his special use program will be perpetual. Perpetual. Is that okay with everyone? I think. We talked about. Doing this that. Uh, we give him a one year. Trial period. And if everything seemed to be in good order, we would. Grant the uh, extension perpetually. Provided the. Owner, he continues to be the owner, if it does change hands, then it would have to go, come back to us. Is that okay with everyone?
And then just, just for clarification, if there are violations that code enforcement. And code enforcement has the right to resume that and then come back in at some point. Just for clarification.
You want to say what the process would be?
Um, we do have the authority. Um, to do so, and if there's any changes, they still have to renew annually for short term rental application, so. If there's any changes at that point, then that would prompt us to help them come back to the planning board to.
Right, but it doesn't have to come back to us anymore. It just comes to you guys.
Yep, so if everything stays the same, we don't have any complaints, there's no issues, then the special use permit. Is good, and then we just keep renewing the short term rental and.
And then if there's a, I mean, if there's. Code enforcement and zoning enforcement have the ability to, if it's a clear. It is where we're yanking it from you. You don't have this permit anymore through the planning board, I mean, there's there are three issues, they have that authority, but you can also. Bring it to the board for the board decision, if it's, well, they had a violation, but they fixed it, but. You know, what do you guys think? Are you so comfortable? If that would go under other board business perhaps, then the board can consider that they issued a special permit that you can, for instance, revocation. Or compliance with conditions.
So just so I'm clear with what you just said, if, if there's a community complaint of some kind or complaints that. They don't feel that code enforcement has done enough, they could still request that it come back to us for review, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm sorry, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying. If code enforcement. Finds that. There's clear violations and they're not getting fixed, code enforcement doesn't need. Right, you know, we all trust them to just do it and just.
Sure, the permit goes away, and they, they.
Yeah, they just get rid of it.
So when the permit goes away, this special use form goes.
If there's a middle ground where zoning thinks you guys should make the decision not. So like Kristen says, geez, I don't really have the authority to revoke their permit. But. And maybe the board says, no, that's fine, that's within what we were planning for. There's that level of.
And the, any other reason would be if they change their operations procedure, number of occupants. Parking. If anything changes from what was originally approved, then.
Like any other.
Okay, so uh, we have a renewal of the special use permit. Uh, anyone in the audience? To address the board regarding this application? Yes, sir. Your, your name and address.
My name is Ed Varno, I live at fifty three eighty Johnson Road, and we share a one thousand foot property by. Along the, along the property.
Thank you.
We um. Don't like to keep track of what's going on, but sometimes. There's things up there that happen that need attention. Most recently, two weeks in a row, they had a guest who started a campfire. And um, didn't put it out. And I contacted Brett about it and he got back to me about two and a half hours later and said his people would go down there and put the fire out. That never happened. Okay. The, the week before that. His guests were going across the property into the woods. Grabbing logs and dragging back across the fields. To burn the fire. I think we have a problem with campfires. And any approval, of course, I complain, I made a phone complaint about, I don't know if one of them. Um, the uh. File or not. That, that's unacceptable, we had a bad drought this summer. And we don't need. Fires racing across fields and.
I think there's a statewide ban from fires.
So that, that was the first thing, the second thing is um, there were incidents up there with uh. Many, many, many car. Um, and it's, it's into the part of the code we talked about defense. Because it was immediately. A memorial service for somebody at a big dinner. And that, you know. Brett told me that. Is that an event?
This, this occurred. Last year something, or early on, right?
Early, early in the year.
Yeah, that's why I said there were some hiccups when we first got started, I. I don't live far from the, the home either and.
So the, you know, it, it really, I mean, it, it's not my job being an adjacent property owner to police his operation. Okay, but. When you see, you know, cars go up or a minivan dropping people off and leaving. I don't, we don't know how many people are in that house. You know, cause he's obviously, the words got out, they can't anymore hate cars. And that's just about what we see up there, that's just a repetitive thing, he's, every weekend, he's, he's got things going on. So um, the, the, what I'm asking is that. If you're going to approve it. Please keep it going only for a year and prohibit. They aren't controlled. There, there's no way to, to stop, you know, stop people from. They don't provide wood that I'm aware of, so they have to go over for what on adjacent properties, and it's, it's, it's asking for trouble.
Alright, thank you. Brett, do you have a response? Mister Vargen?
Uh, yeah, yeah, thanks, and, and I appreciate he, he had told me on a, on a. Afternoon that there was a campfire that he thought uh, had not been put out, immediately as soon as I saw his text message, I. Responded to him, called, got my property manager over there. She inspect, sorry, inspected everything and, and didn't see any evidence, uh, you know, I have a video if you guys want, um, you know, that she took that day. Um, when she went there, uh. And there was no evidence of any ongoing fire, um. I'm not discounting the possibility, I, you know, but um. We just didn't have any evidence and, and I wish that maybe Ed could have provided some evidence, I, you know, that's, that's all I have to really say about that. Um, I, I don't think that there's any irresponsible use going on, um, there's maybe some recreational use with, with families, um. But you know, I, I, I find it hard to believe that there'd be anything, you know, majorly irresponsible going on beyond. What probably goes on um, in the town day to day. Um, uh, the other comment that he had made about the memorial service. I remember there was a question when we originally approved, and, and first of all, you know, let me back up and just say thank you guys for. Approving us last year and, you know, it, I think a lot of good came out of this process. And you know, I really appreciate that, so I'm sorry I didn't say that earlier. Uh, um, when we did go through the approval last year, um. We did actually get hung up on. This uh, question of daytime. Uh, not events, we strictly prohibit events, but daytime, it could be more people than. Actually stay in and I, and the rule is up to twice as many as are staying overnight. Um, and then we brought up that issue of how many cars can come in during the day versus overnight, and we kind of just left it open to interpretation. Um, and then, you know, this did happen a few, very early on, like you, like you mentioned. Um, there was somebody had died and there was, uh, the guests wanted to hold a memorial service for friends that were local. And so they did so, I wasn't actually aware of it, um, until. Uh. Um, my, my property manager told me when Ed. Messaged me with the complaint and then I reached out to her. She reached out to get the guests and disrupted the service and, you know, actu- actually caused some emotional distress, but. Uh, the, the end of the story was, how many cars were there? I think it was more than, you know, it was maybe twelve instead of eight. Um, during the day, and we never had really hammered that down, I'm okay with having eight at all times, um. But I just think we need to just get rid of all possible question marks and just, you know. A- as of right now, that's our rule is eight, is eight, or it might be, it might be nine, uh, at all times. But we need to just hammer that out before maybe the meeting is over, so there's no questions, uh, you know, between uh, me and Ed.
Can I ask a question, did you, did I understand you to say that your property manager went and? Put a stop to the memorial service?
She, no, she reached out to the guests that were staying there, the guy's wife, uh, the, the guy who had died, it was his wife that she. Was staying there with some friends and she reached out to them and, uh, you know, the, the, the guest called her back. You know, crying and, and was apologetic and, and it was a, I don't know, it was just not a great situation, but. Maybe with a little more planning, uh, you know, it could have been avoided.
Brett, what has been the frequency of your rentals, uh? Every weekend, every other weekend, once a month, uh, how, how often is the house? Being used?
Uh, I would say every weekend, uh, between October and. Um, April and May, and then, you know, weeks where schools off, for example, like holiday weeks. Tend to be booked a few nights and then from June till uh, September, we have. Um. Uh, you know, June maybe sixty percent occupancy and then July, August, like ninety percent of nights are booked. And then September, maybe another s- like sixty percent, and then it kind of goes back to weekends. So the, that high season be- between June through September. Uh, it's more frequent than every weekend, but that off season, it's, it's, it's basically weekends.
Okay. So the uh, issues Mister Vargo you have are campfires and events. Uh, campfires, um, do your, does your statement of operations or your? Uh. Guidelines of. Or restrictions that you have on your uh, residents include no campfires? Is that a restriction you have or you could have?
It's not a restriction we have, no.
Could it be?
I think it's something that, you know, the families really enjoy, um, you know, uh, so I prefer to allow campfires. Uh, we have a nice uh, area that was constructed to, you know, that's very safe, um. And it was built for this purpose and, you know, to minimize risk and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a decent size, uh. And we haven't had any issues.
Okay, but. Fires have to be controlled in a certain way, they, I mean. To have a fire in the town of Canada, you can't have a bonfire, obviously. But as long as it's. Controlled in some manner, I, I don't have the wording, I think we have it in the code somewhere.
Also be solved in the.
And the drought.
Like a gas fire pit, isn't it?
It allows for the uh, fire pit to be more controlled.
What is that?
Just uh, just thinking through, um. I don't, I don't know that there would be a, a restriction of any kind towards something like a gas fire pit. Cause I don't know how those are controlled, uh, distances from structures and things along those lines.
That's more a code enforcement question, and I know that when the complaint came in and it was with, or perhaps of the fire and. Mike did cross wrap on state open and so that there was no issue with it, um. I have been to the property and, and Brett is correct, it's a very large substantial stoned.
As he said, when it's a drought and fires have been.
Well, that's.
Prohibited, it's a. You know, of.
But even that was.
Revolutionary violation.
The, the burn van went into effect October second. And then it's in effect into the spring again, so. Well, uh. I, I don't think the board has problems with extending this special use permit, I think it's with maybe now conditions. Or maybe a further restriction. Uh. Maybe we. You know, have to limit to another year, just to. Make sure there's compliance. I'm just thinking out loud here. Is, is the occupancy currently twelve?
Eighteen.
It's great, okay. The, that's.
So that would allow for thirty six daytime guests.
And what is, what's the, what is the requirement for cars during? Period when guests are on property?
There is a one, the requirement is one parking space per bedroom.
For overnight?
That's, that's the only parking, and part, that's the only parking restriction, also states that parking needs to be on a solid surface, not on grass. So there isn't anything spelled out for parking for day and night owners.
Okay, so. There isn't necessarily, there isn't necessarily a violation. If guests in the number that's allowed drive to the property and park on the driveway or somewhere. To access and continue to.
Right, it would be an issue if the cars were still there at night and they were staying overnight.
Does that help me answer your question, Mister Burr liner?
Yeah, absolutely, so there's no restriction during the day, uh, but at night, there's obvious restrictions that we've been enforcing. And, and listen, this is. A rare occurrence, we don't have events, uh. There are daytime guests sometimes, uh. You know, but we haven't even come close to having thirty six people there, um. So, uh, you know, it was just kind of unfortunate the way that, that, that had happened, um, but I'm happy that we, we reached a resolution that that's. Completely uh, allowed.
Vargo, uh. Of many events that Mister Burr liner explained, uh, apparently it's pretty frequent. Have, have there been other? Issues other than the campfire and this one event with the memorial? I mean.
No, I, I, I. I'm not policing his operations.
No, no, it's not your job to do that, I'm just saying that.
He has large groups of people there all the time. Now, he, I, I'll say that he's kept to his car because they bring people, drop them off and leave. Uh, there was a uh, a bus one time that came up, dropped a bunch of people off. Uh, the night of the, or the day of the, um. Day of the eclipse. There was proudly. Twenty students up there, with two teachers. That were just lined up on the, on the front lawn of the place, waiting for the eclipse to take place. Um. There were a lot of cars there at that time and a bus had dropped off some of the students, I mean, like a school. So, um. I, I don't know how to, they said, what's an event? And um. How sad large. Is having events, I mean, that's just the way it is. Um, it's sad that the word event is not. Defined in the code, we pushed for that when the code originally being developed. And they didn't wanna, the town didn't wanna touch that issue or. Um. I will say, I will say that the, the crowds have, the crowd, the groups have not spilled up. Into the property. Very often. The worst was when they were going dragging wood across the, the. The pasture there, uh, bringing wood to the fireplace. And that was like, you know, we had to, we were out there and just. Get out of here, you know, get off that, we were yelling at the school people. And uh. And you know, that, they, they stopped doing it. But, you know, that's, that's, it, it's just problematic, the person that owns the property isn't there. And the people that manage the property, you know, they gotta be called. And then they gotta drive there, and they gotta look. You know, so it, it's, it's problematic the way the whole thing operates began with.
You know, Ed, I, do you know when that? When that happened?
What? You have a question, Brett?
Yeah, when, when did that happen? I'm just trying to figure it out, because when we did this special use permit, uh. Um, we, we have since, which was, was one great thing that came out of this and. You know, I wish we had done this previously, was um, including a uh. A map of the property boundaries in the house, which, which we have done, um, and we've had it up there for about a year since the last special use permit. Uh, was completed, and I'm just wondering if this was before or after that map was up there. You know, whether this happened or not, I, you know, he hadn't made me aware of this until now, but. Um, you know, I'll take your word for it, uh, but I just am wondering if, um, you know, it happened. Before our special use permit even existed, like you mentioned the solar eclipse, which was in twenty twenty four. You know, before our special use permit as well.
Your complaint came in on September twenty eighth. This year.
Yeah, and the um, the other, um. The fire issue. It was uh, was two weekends around the random fire. It was uh, it was two weekends around the random fire. This year.
Apparently Labor Day.
Oh, Labor Day, yeah, yeah. And that's the one that we got concerned about people leaving the property and, you know, going and dragging wood across the neighbor's pasture.
Okay.
So is there an administrative policy for your guests regarding um, having a fire and fuel for the fire?
Uh, you know, small wood fires are 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 permitted, it's not, it's not written, it's not a written policy, but you know, I'm happy to do that. If if that's what you guys are suggesting, um, it's not a problem.
And then I think the fire is twofold of the the attendees of the house, the, you know, the visitors seeking out fuel for that file fire wood, going out and, you know, maybe crossing one property boundary lines, whatever. And then engaging in the fire during a relatively dry season and looking at the state of operations in the support sustainable tourism. I think we could say in terms of like, using a fire, like may perhaps there could be wording added or something to say like, you know, just is it safe to have a fire right now? Does it make sense to have like, just check with your local guidance and and it is kind of like respect local regulations, et cetera. Um, but I I think either that language could represent having a safe fire or additional language could be added to to help with that, and then with the seeking wood, like could the, could like kindling or whatever be provided to the visitors so that they're not, you know, crossing property lines, you know, it's maybe like a stack of wood right there available for them that are, you know, like
I think foraging for firewood should be acceptable.
Right, so I'm saying, could we just like
Yeah.
One, make this a one-year expiration again, two. Add a condition that the house rules need to uh be changed, updated, to say no foraging for wood.
Right.
And follow the uh, you know, comply with uh regulations on uh having or not having a fire. Uh, and then also a condition saying signage to that effect needs to be added, this is where you can't forage or something to that. Does that make sense, Mr. Berliner?
It makes sense, yeah, yeah, I um, you know, if that if that happened, I I think we should, we should obviously make it more obvious that that's not that's not acceptable um. As far as renewing for one year, um, I prefer if, you know, we continued on the path where we were going uh for full approval. Um, and you know, under those conditions, um, so I I would like your opinion on that.
Well, my opinion would be, given the issues that we discussed this evening, that it shouldn't be perpetual, it should be for another year. And see what kind of uh action we get and compliance. So therefore.
So therefore, Amanda.
Uh, is there anything else we want to add to the resolution at this time for continuation, other than it be for a additional year? As far as the parking and some of the things Brett that you had asked get ironed out, I think a lot of that is in your permit. Not the special use permit, but in the permit you have with the town regarding yes, short-term rentals, right?
Well, it's in the, it's in the code, yeah.
Yeah.
They acknowledged that they've brought
One space per per bedroom.
Nine parking spaces?
Yeah, that's what I said in the state of
Okay, that was what was approved, and that's for overnight.
Got the quiet hours. Okay, anything else we want to add to the resolution at this point, other than that change?
As far as burn bans, New York State is your favorite wall that identifies those
But it does allow for fire pits, right?
Open burning.
It's open burning, yeah.
Well, so if we add it as a condition, then if they, if it's, whatever it is, is in violation of the burn ban. Then code enforcement can, that's a violation, oh, it's easier if we frame it in terms of this is our condition that you have to comply with the state.
Is there currently any limitation on town resources to be able to handle this property? From a complaint standpoint, it sounds like so far that there have been complaints. They've been investigated, they've been resolved, so it's not a, this is not a complaint or a concern from code enforcement or zoning that doesn't sound.
It sounds like your neighbors had some reasonable complaints and not, you know, ending up and
But that's not
People go crazy and call three times a day.
That's why I'm asking is that there hasn't been a problem responding to them, and they've been responsive.
Yes.
Yeah, from the code and and zoning standpoint, it sounds like compliance has occurred. Mr. Vargo has brought up some issues that I think is somewhat concerning, and I think that's why we're willing to grant the extension for the one year, let's see if uh everything sort of pans out.
Yes, all I'm saying, Chuck, is the system's working.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think so.
I would agree, I would agree with Mark. If code enforcement is satisfied with the owner's response to the complaints. And we ironed out the other issue about daytime parking. We ironed out an additional uh condition with regard to open burn and no foraging for fuel, I don't have any objection proving this perpetually.
My main motivation is not to treat one project differently from the other, if the problems are resolved. I mean, the system is designed such that if there are problems that are unresolved, then you have three quarters.
Guess what I'm saying is, there's been problems. The fact that there are problems and they have to be resolved, um. If Thornton, no problems.
If that's the case, Chuck, then what I would do if I had a problem with my neighbors, I would blow them up every week and I would create more problems. If I didn't like
Is your point, Mark, and Tim, that uh, the the planning board isn't dealing with the problems or can't deal with the problems? Zoning and code enforcement can and is?
Yes.
Yeah, like Mark said, the system seems to be working. And and what we heard was that code enforcement, if code enforcement feels that it is that they can bring it back, they can refer it right back to the planning.
It can be back next month. I correct me if I'm wrong, but if they pull the permit, it could be back to us next month.
Okay, why don't we why don't we get get a motion for the resolution as written, which has the perpetual? See how the mood falls. Somebody want to make that?
How many people want to do any conditions about burning?
I have three additional suggestions.
Let's get, let's get to motion.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion for a special use permit at forty-four ten, it'll just erode C P N twenty-five dash one one zero uh with the additional conditions that were brought up today related to
Yeah, uh, condition fifteen, the policy regarding bonfires. Shall we add to the statement of operations and house rules? It must at least detail uh the foraging for wood on neighboring properties allowed, and then fires must be extinguished um when guests leave the fire pit. Um, signage, city factor, you missed in fifteen, shall we post it to the property? The condition seventeen, burn vans and stuff by New York State shall comply with. Uh, and then just for clarification, your motion also included the secret type two action.
Yes, it's okay to bundle that.
Um, I ask, would ask for one direction, I hate to turn these campfire, not bonfire, but
Wait a second.
Second.
Fire in pit or some
Further discussion?
Fire in the located area, fire in the designated area, yeah.
Hard skate.
Yes.
Doesn't need a hard skate.
Okay, motion second, for the discussion, if none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, I oppose. Okay, the votes three to one. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. The jizz. Uh, Shell Clark.
That's
C P N.
Guys, I'm really sorry, so
Thank you, Brett.
You got it.
I got it, okay. All right, thank you, thank you very much, guys, goodbye.
Uh, Michelle?
Yeah.
Thanks for coming out this evening, uh, you still want to go through this after?
I'll need to keep a stay of yours, Mr. Ray.
We don't bite, uh, I will open the hearing for Michelle's special use permit for short-term rental at thirty-four oh seven West Lake Boulevard. I guess I'll ask the same question I had asked previously regarding the compliance over the last year, this has been a one-year permit also, and it is up for renewal.
Correct, uh, we have had no complaints. Um, this property, uh, we went and did an inspection a couple of weeks ago. Everything looked great, uh, they're all to date with their fire safety, so.
Okay.
It looks like there is something new uploaded to neighbor letter came in.
Mister David B. Pat on November sixth. Thinks people should be able to rent their homes, but objects to having occupancy of more than twelve people two doors down from the property we own at thirty-four thirteen West Lake Boulevard. I believe more than twelve people is too many people and it has the potential to draw people wanting to party which could disrupt the peaceful neighborhood.
Kristen, did you just say no complaints or no official complaints? No, okay.
You say thirty-four thirteen?
Believe that was us.
This is thirty-four oh seven.
Well, that's my house, yeah.
Have you, in the time since you've been running it, have you had larger?
Larger groups than twelve?
I know, the the up to the twelve.
Have we had that larger groups? Yes, I'm pretty sure we have.
And no complaints have come in with those?
No, no, no. And I guess Chuck, you asked a good question on the last one, so I'll ask it again, I guess, what's your um, average rate of stay?
Occupancy?
Occupancy.
Yeah, I thought about that when you asked Kim, I wish my brother were here, because my brother knows it all, I'm just the local one, and he's out of the country, so that's why he's not zooming in. Um, I I know we're a hundred percent occupancy in June, June, July, August, a hundred percent. You know, this time of year, we're we're, I think October, we did every weekend, but now we've dropped way off. And we have maybe a Thanksgiving weekend, which I think maybe we'll do this year. Maybe a Christmas, but but that's like it, and then nothing in January, nothing in February, nothing in March usually. And people will pick up a tiny bit, but so mostly just June, July, August, a little bit in September, too.
Yeah, so the good news is you're fully occupied, and the further good news is there's been no complaints based on your
Yeah, that's good to hear, because I don't think our neighbor really likes this. So I'm glad, I'm glad there's been nothing coming, yes.
Okay, um, I'll open it up to anyone uh would like to address the board regarding this application for thirty-four oh seven West Lake Boulevard or a short-term route extension. No one, okay, let's go to the extension itself, um. Again, it's worded similar to the last solution, as I find it, but it does have a perpetual renewal.
This one does have it, this doesn't compare as much with the last one, certainly see the point eleven highlights, that this is sixteen people daytime or night.
I think that was what uh was was testimony when we issued the original permit and if they say that's all they want to have, that's what we say.
Yep.
It's all they can have, so. Uh. And that amount stays the same.
Excellent, they will, anything, yeah, they, they're excellent.
So we have the uh, again, the resolution includes the condition it be forever, as long as you own the property and conditions don't change out there regarding the uh your operations. Uh. Someone want to make a motion? Now, in this case, uh you know, I can, I personally can see no reason not to make it continual. But because there, there hasn't been any issues. So
Or we sell, you said, yeah.
Do we have a motion to handle both the seeker type two and the extent, I'll close the hearing and seek a motion for the seeker and the
Yeah, I'm happy to make the bundle motion for the seeker type two, as well as especially for C P N twenty-five dash one four, thirty-four oh seven West Lake Boulevard, the conditions, uh, list.
A second.
A motion second, further discussion. If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Post, all opposition, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Are you gonna tell your brother that it was as brutal as the happy for you?
Okay, uh, next we have a review of the C P N twenty twenty-five one nineteen Works Engineering, representing the property owner thirty-five sixteen Sandy Beach Drive. Uh, they are going before the Z B A next week for some variances, and because it is a non-conforming property currently, uh, we are asked to look at it and give any comments to the Z B A that we may have regarding the variance request. So uh Brennan's here. Brennan, or do you want to tell us a little bit about the project?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Mr. Lace is also on too, so he can answer some questions. Uh, we've uh, Mr. Lace um remodeled this home completely um, back in twenty twenty-one, I think it was, and added on a little bit then. Um, I'm adding on a twelve-foot addition on the front of the house, uh, depending on which way you look at it, it's the side opposite of the lake, it is not the lakeside. Um, so we're adding twelve feet. Uh, it has a front setback issue with Sandy Beach Drive, uh, that we're going for a zoning variance for. Also a lot coverage issue, um. Yeah, that's, that's basically a, oh, we're gonna tie into an existing infiltration trench that's on the north property line.
Okay, that trench is existing, okay, I wasn't sure the way it was represented on the plan and was proposed, I know in previous applications, it was discussed about installing it, so it did get installed, Brett?
Yeah.
And you're intense to uh run all the uh downspouts uh into it? Uh, running it from the south side or around to the east side to the north side?
Yep.
And I guess uh, you were here back in twenty twenty-three, but the new garage?
Yeah, it did not get built, they did not go for, they did not go forward with that.
Okay. And back in twenty twenty, the patio, the deck, the sidewalks
Yep.
Uh, were built.
Yep.
And that's probably when the infiltration system was put in, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess as our our normal Charge on items like this where it's a Z B A variance, which is, we certainly don't, don't want to influence. Z B A in terms of their discussing the setbacks and all, but. Uh, concern would be obviously when we look at this and we, I guess we will look at it as a site plan at some point. Uh, assuming you're successful with Z B A, uh, drainage. And, uh. I guess the infiltration system, I mean, you're adding some more impervious. Uh, can that system? Handle it, and I guess the other thing is the functionality of that system. Uh, if there is a surcharge in the infiltration system. Is that then overflow into the lake or how, how does that work, Brett?
That's correct, yeah, there's an overflow into the lake.
Is it through a pipe discharge or is it just a?
Yeah, yeah, there's a six inch pipe through the break wall.
And that's currently taking all the existing downspouts.
That's correct.
Is, when, is it taking the ones on the south side now? Or is that proposed?
Uh, it is taking the ones, um, I believe it is taking the ones on the south side now.
Yes. Board. Questions and concerns other than it's sandy beach and it's on the lake and. This expansion of life coverage.
It'll be smaller than the house next to it. It'll be three feet away from.
Yes, the, yeah, the. The side setback there with the addition on the. South side would just get.
Sure.
No, it'll get a little bigger.
It would, it would get a little bit bigger, yes, okay.
Which I don't understand, but that's what.
I, same, okay. Yeah, I, yeah, I guess how?
There's a, there's a slight step in the wall, it doesn't, it's not a, it's continuous wall.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, I think point three.
Okay.
Yeah, it's saying it's a three inch step in the wall.
Little. Let's, let's call it a.
Oh, right there, oh, yeah, oh.
We haven't heard back from the county on this yet, in fact, I think they're meeting tonight. Uh, tonight's the county playboard meeting, so, um. We certainly will before the site plan was discussed, um. Will the, will the front facade heights? Match the same height as the house next door?
Well, what was that question with the, the new?
The front facade height match the house next door?
I don't, I don't know what the height.
Probably both gonna go to the max, right?
Uh, I think, I think we're staying six inches under.
Okay.
But I don't think anything there is over twenty five feet.
No. We're currently, I think it's twenty three.
By the, by the house next door.
The house next door is knocked down, they're both knocked down, they're building a new one.
Yes, the, the new house is what I'm talking about.
Okay.
So, uh. Other than our standard concerns about incremental. Uh, increasing impervious along the lake, uh. Anything else we want to pass along to the Z B A? Well, okay, I'll let that be known, I, we have our. Standard position on that is, uh, anyone? Online want to address the board regarding this application, although you'll certainly. Have your chance next Tuesday, the Z B A to address the variances. If not. Okay, uh, so I will send it on to the Z B A. Comments regarding our concerns about the increase in impervious, uh. And take it from there, all right? Okay, thanks, Brennan and, and Mark.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good luck next week.
Thank you.
Alrighty, twenty twenty five oh sixty nine, Marcelo Bastisti. Thirty five forty two. Sandy Beach, uh, you told our last meeting, uh, last week, uh. Kind of got into a whistle. And this thing regarding what was approved, what wasn't approved in the past, uh, these. Staff has done a crack review and found all kinds of, uh. You want to, I guess, Kristen's, what you found that?
So a permit was issued in twenty twenty four for a deck expansion. Um. So the deck expansion brought them within twenty seven feet of their rear lot line. Should have required a variance. That didn't happen. Um, and then once the deck was built, it should have been ten feet from the side lot line. But it was seven point two feet from the side lot line. Um, so they went back to the drawing table and Anthony drew up new plans today. Which will put the, uh, two story addition thirty feet from their lot line and ten feet from the side lot line. So it will. Be inside the footprint of the existing deck, not require any variances and. Reduce the degree of non-conformity that shouldn't be allowed.
So it's reduced the size of the addition to thirteen by twenty six rather than sixteen by twenty eight?
Yeah, I think I'll reach out to them tomorrow and ask for new. Architecturals.
Yeah, yeah.
But the site plan has been updated.
What about the boat house? Covered boat house.
That's a great question for Mike Murphy. I know the dock permit was issued, I, I don't know, I don't know anything about that. I don't.
That, so I guess my question is more general. Do they require permit and there's a difference between a dock? And a dock with a superstructure?
There is under uniform docking and more in law, I don't know what it is off the top of my head. Yes, it requires a building permit. As well as sometimes D E C permits. I just don't know where this is in relation to the meet high watermark.
And how does that all wrap up and relate to our shoreline guy guidelines? As far as how with the piers and how?
It's a good question.
In aspect, as I'm familiar, the basically planning board forces shoreline guidelines when something comes to you for site plan approval in the R O E. But since those don't come to you for site plan approval, uh, because it's just issued as part of the building permit process, you call the first office. There's no shoreline guidelines, process for the point one.
Okay, and again, with regard to something like this, this is my first experience with it. And I would say that anything that's superstructure. Has a visual in.
Oh, but I think.
No, and.
And looking at what they have there, it's, and I believe it's gonna be in line and adopted. And what's a lot of, um, because it's not closed in on the south, it has a roof on it. Has a lot of columns, but it's not closing on the sides. If it closes in the sides, then it becomes a boat house, and I think that has a requirement of two hundred and fifty feet. Up front. I think it feels overbearing here because it's such a small space. But I think we're gonna find out that that. Boat then isn't compliant that. Because so.
Well, we spend an awful lot of time. Trying to protect the view of the lake, is it view of the lake or was it viewed from? And why this trend doesn't fit into our preferred guidelines, but. And something that I'm raising is, maybe it should.
Well, I think you make a good point, and I think Mike and I are probably gonna have a conversation about that in the morning.
You're welcome.
See, we walked in.
Walked right into that. Um, and I'll tell you, Eric just hit the nail on the head, is that you're the board, you're the process. Through which shoreline development guidelines are generally. Uh, enforced, and that's because in your site. Plan review code section and the zoning code says, planning board has to do that. That being said, the shoreline development guidelines very well might be required. Whether there's planning board review or not, and Mike and I are gonna review that tomorrow.
Cool.
It's a good point.
Put that on. Just a couple of other names on the best one.
We're gonna talk about other stuff anyway, I'm sure.
There's a, uh, there is a giant pipe at the roadway that looks as though it goes straight into the road. Coverage, I didn't look at that basin. That's there, um, something to clear up that we talked about last time is expansion, just in general, expansion of pre-existing non-conform. So as I understand it now, the position is, position that's being taken by zoning now is that if we don't change the physical footprint. And it's not at a pre, so whether that's vertical or not, you don't feel that as an expansion, it's literally a physical footprint.
It would be an expansion of the setback, so. And that's how it's been interpreted for.
Since I was.
For a while, yeah, before.
Which I know that you were talking about two thousand and sixteen.
Right, yeah. I know.
Okay, uh, so since the plan came in this afternoon. Really didn't get a chance to look at it, I told. I told Anthony that, uh, it would be continued. So we had a chance to look at the plan. And, uh. Is anyone here, uh, online? Want to address the board regarding this application since they've been so good to wait this long?
Did we answer the question on the flagpole as well, that came up as? I mean, I've never, I've not seen a permit for a flagpole, but that's because I considered it permanent structure.
Yes.
The impervious.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it was raised, do we require?
Flagpoles.
Yeah, the flagpoles are not a structural.
Like beauty in the eye of the beholder.
They could fall down, I guess, and.
Does it require a foundation?
That's not a requirement for structures. Under our code, which. Think in general, code enforcement knows. What needs to be considered a structure for purposes of enforcing our code and our town has done well relying on their good judgment.
Great, I did, um, it was raised in the last discussion on this property specifically, so that's why.
I think it was an aesthetic.
The flag.
Thing, the flagpole.
So, but it doesn't require a permit at any time, is that fair?
I don't think, I don't think flagpoles require provocation.
I'm good with that, I just wanna make sure where there's.
It was brought up, you're right. Okay, I don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time since the applicant's not here on this side.
Well, and you don't have a real.
Let's just, uh. Get past the motion to continue.
So do we need to do it? We don't need to, is it withdrawn, then? Do we have to continue, I think you need a continuation?
Yeah.
All right, so moved on the continuation.
Was two.
Good.
Thirty five.
Your win.
Just two weeks or? Two weeks.
Long time in the development? Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth, fine. Okay, got a motion second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, um. Last item. Twenty twenty five one thirty two is regarding a, uh. Revision of the form-based code. Is that why you showed up, Murph?
There is.
Okay. Well, I thought I would have to go through all this, thank God I don't. Well, this is such a simple item that I'll pass on to Mister Murphy. To explain, uh. Give an overview of what's changing, I guess we'll have to get into. Page by page, I know the revisions online. Uh, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. Uh. But. Murph can tell us, uh, what's in and what's out.
Yep, so thanks, Chuck, um. A lot of the revisions are. Based on what has come to light with proposed developments within the form-based code area. Number one thing that staff was given going into this process was to adjust the approval process, um. We got a lot of feedback, not only from developers, property owners, town staff, town boards. Um, committees that the back and forth that. Was involved in that process. Dragged on applications, um, and so staff was given the task of reviewing form-based code in that sense. That was a small seed that grew into a lot, um. I know that the document that was provided to everyone is very rudimentary, I apologize for that, I'm not an I T professional by any means. Um, if you have questions, Eric read through it seamlessly, reach out to Gerg, okay? Need a lot of back and forth. In reality, if you have any questions on the formatting of it, please reach out to me, all right, uh, or Kristen, um. We changed the approval process, removing the town board fully, okay? In their place, we have since taken the planning board. And put them in place town board, and we started an administrative approval process where the planning boards purview was. So anything that is a development involving less than five thousand square feet. Of structure or three units or less, will go through an administrative approval process. Those that are not will go through the town planning board process of form-based code. Previously, it was planning board for less and then planning board and town board for greater, all right? Um.
Can I, can I just confirm, so? If it's less than five hundred square feet or?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Five thousand, okay. Or three units or less, it goes, it's an admin approval, but then. More than five thousand or more than four. Is planning for, I was reading it and I was.
Four.
Or four or more. Or, or more, so four, five, six, seven onward, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Um, beyond that, we reduced a lot of the compliance guidelines as far as. Uh, relatable work, uh, we got a lot of feedback on, you know, if I wanted to re-site my building. Technically underneath the previous form-based code, you had to come into compliance with certain aspects of form-based code. We've reduced quite a bit of that, um, especially on what staff and the ordinance community has deemed cosmetic in nature. As opposed to true building renovations and additions, et cetera. All right. Uh, we also adjusted the biggest ones, that was before.
Go ahead.
Was building setbacks, all right, um. Ordinance committee requested that we remove the maximum setback from every single. District within form-based code, the three thirty two corridor, as well as the suburb. What that means is that now buildings have to be a range. We say ten feet for now, middle and ten feet from the property boundaries with no maximums, they can be a thousand feet back, they hundred feet back. They're leaving that in the eye of the developers to what they propose. With that. We are now going to be planning to allow parking in front of the structure again, we're focusing on the big changes. With limitations, there is a typo in your package, um, that was pointed out by ordinance, it's my fault. It is now, we will allow four parking lanes and two driving lanes between the property and the primary street, all right?
Official.
Yep, totally understand.
And I just like threw that new one next to Monroe Muffler and just like. And it felt it for the first time, so.
Yeah, um, and again, there was a lot of feedback that was given, why we want for those changes, okay? Uh, some of the other major items, transparency has changed, um. Ultimately, we decided to go with what was approved by the town board on the incentive zoning package for uptown landing, as for transparencies. Um, we have not taken that to other architects yet, we really, this initial review is more of a really rough draft. Because it is such a large job. So we do want to get each boards, each groups, each committees input before we actually have a true rough draft. Hopefully go into a public hearing in the future. Beyond that, the other changes really just have to stem with technical items from staff perspective with definitions and, uh, documentation that's required. Uh, documentation that's required, nothing too crazy. The overall big ones were the setbacks, uh, transparency. allowable building materials is now changed to excluded building materials. Uh, with some calculations, there is a typo in your draft that you have. It says we do not allow any less than or greater than seventy five square feet. Seventy five. The typo is that it says that you are. Only allowed to have more than seventy five percent metal siding or vinyl siding, it's supposed to be less than. You have to have less than seventy five percent, that was again my fault, this was a very big document that we. Took a long time on, but through this red line together in about two weeks. Alright. Uh, beyond that, everything else is all technical.
Um, do you have a? Rough idea of how much of one base gold so. It's undeveloped compared to how much of it is currently developed?
Not factual numbers, I'd hate to be the guy to give you.
Back of the envelope.
Yep, I, I can get your real numbers off the top of my head, I would say. Around ten percent of the three thirty two corridor, there's about five lots, if not more. That are undeveloped, again offhand, uh, the sub area, you're looking at about seventy five percent. If not more unde- undeveloped, yes sir.
Problem is, that's vacant essentially, perfect. There's a ton of developable land. Additions to be built, and at least a ton of. Empty space, and that's where we've been problems.
Well, you know, you don't want the industry and this means business from expand.
Yeah.
Correct, and that was why we changed a lot of those benchmarks. Um, because that really came to life with quite a few of the applications. I will say the three thirty two area, no transparency is big with this board, changed very slightly. The main area was the suburb that changed drastically, and the driver behind that was the residential. As a building official I can speak to, you don't want seventy five percent transparency on a single family home, that's just. Unfeasible for a ground structure. Correct, yes.
Well, there are various, on every application, everything, most part, yes, um, the other thing is, and I. I don't know, this is not factual, Eric, maybe you can weigh in. I think we've seen a diminished volume of. Applications in this area, and I don't know if that's just naturally people didn't want to develop, so weren't planning on development. But there used to be a fair amount of Route three thirty two corridor. Changes being made on the Mazas, on those cardio, on those. Uh. Vehicle service places. I haven't seen them in a long time.
I know the cardio ships definitely hated the form base code from the beginning. But on to your point, Tim, it's very vacant out there and it has been for a number of years. And that was part of the reason why we got rid of the restricted business district, they covered a lot of that area years ago. I think in the conference plan, it talks about how vacant some of that area is. And the fact that it has utilities that are basically unutilized and people are paying for them, creating something bad.
Turns out not really.
Uh, anyways. So, uh, yeah, it's very vacant, I don't know, there's been an impediment development, there really hasn't been much out there in thirty years. But I think we need revision to get us closer to the point where it's. Where the town wants it to be.
Yeah, the other big change that I forgot about was signage, we overhauled that, I think it was a mistake on. The original document was developed with town staff but not by town staff. So we changed it from allowing a single building sign per building to somewhere to what we have in the CC. One per tenant space. Um, because we saw quite a few variance requests off of that. So, and again, that I believe that to be a mistake in the original document.
Any changes to support the concepts around complete streets?
Nothing. Nothing changed in the complete streets aspect, um. The only real other change. That besides technical is we removed the requirement for bike parking from single family and townhomes. I know that sounds really dumb, but that was one thing that was pointed out with the uptown project, um, that staff and ordinance found very funny. We were going through this very long process, um. The complete streets though, hasn't really changed, it will change. We're planning to go through a slight design criteria update again, there'll be some minor changes with that, um. But nothing too crazy, just as far as requirements for. Uh, striping and size and stuff like that, that'll be built into it.
I, I think we lived through this with uptown. I think we realized where some of the issues were, obviously the administrative procedure was. Very, very almost confusing both us and to the applicant, so I think. This draft, uh, strings that out. And, uh. Some of the, s- some of the amenity issues, making sure they're either. Clarified or, you know, as far as things you have to provide as, as the developer. And I think that taking care of that, obviously the setback. The min and the max. Uh, transparency. And I just, obviously, any issues that code and administration had in enforcing that. Th- those have been taken care of, so I, I think that's another thing was the stress, so. Does the board want more time to look at this? Before we give a recommendation, I mean, we, I think your, your schedule is to, uh. Have this reviewed by ordinance again in December.
Correct.
And then you go to public hearing, set the hearing sometime in January for February hearing?
Uh, we would be setting the public hearing in February, January, we just got told by.
Okay, so.
It's all busy that month.
So I mean. I'm, I'm familiar with it because I sit in the ordinance committee, so I, I live through the. So I'm, you know, I'm ready to. You're to go ahead with this, but, uh, if the board wants more time to look this, we can. Uh, revisit this, uh, on the twenty fifth.
I would be curious, like, there's been. There's been a lot of sketches. But then very few things. Approved and applications and things that actually like cross the finish line and. I'm just thinking of like each one of those sketches had. Six, seven, ten variances proposed and. As they continue down the process, right, we were able to minimize those variances, but. I'm curious if there's been a analysis of like what other. Variance requests came in with sketches that maybe didn't get all the way through, like. Are there other roadblocks? That, and these are like big ones, these are good big ones and we're, I, I'll speak for everyone, I'll speak for myself that I'm. I'm liking the direction we're going here, because I think it would. It would help long term, but are there other big?
So you're saying potential projects that haven't gone forward because of the restrictions under the current code?
Right.
Uh, it could be, I.
I think the biggest thing that we heard was the transparency.
Transparency.
Uh, the one that we have no enforcement over that. We keep stopping ourselves from doing it is, and reason for asking is a complete street space. The other things we seem to, it gets into design, they seem.
I was just like trying to wrap my brain for the ones that we've seen over the past year and. Besides uptown, there hasn't been a lot, but uptown was a good case study and.
This takes care of the majority of. I would recommend you reach out to the town supervisor.
Which one?
I, I have no information on that, um. I was just at a county meeting, it was discussed very briefly.
Yeah, I know Ryan worked on it. I just didn't, I haven't heard anything in the test.
Is there any modification to the intensity of? Like when.
Say that again, Tim.
Any modification of the intensity of development, like. When uptown, I think you'd mentioned. By code, they could put a thousand units in.
Yes.
And all they were asking for was six hundred.
Yeah.
Was there been any modification to it?
Nothing really, the only change was to lot size that would really impact the intensity and the density. Um, we actually reduced the lot size requirement to make it a more dense for single family homes, um. We reduced it from a hundred by a hundred to a hundred by sixty, I got just following the compliers. Hundred to a hundred and sixty for the setback, um, I got just following the uptown process. And that's for the sub area, that's not what the original, all the other lot size requirements all stay the same. Um, and respectable was passed.
Everything regarding, again, back to amenities, uh, within our parking area landscaping. Islands. Vegetative islands, that's nothing changed there.
Very minimally, uh, we changed a lot of, uh, again, technical sides, so there was an issue with shared parking, cross access. We're now saying that you can still have cross access, but you need to maintain the five foot setback for parking from the lot line. That creates more of that true cross access connectivity, encourages more pedestrian traffic and vegetation within that five foot buffer area. Um, so, you know, like we heard the complaint, we're hoping that this solves that complaint with the vegetation by. For lack of better term, requiring something to be in that five foot buffer area to reduce that, the needs.
And the species and standards that didn't change in the landscape.
Species, we are changing from what was approved within the form based code, we're now just going off of native species that are listed within the N R I. Um. Which I would imagine is gonna be due for an update here in the next year or two. But that list is straight from the E C's native planning list.
Okay. So you're taking out that whole section of pictures and.
Correct, yep.
The bunnies and the flowers.
Yep. Yeah, we're still keeping the size minimums and the requirements on that, on the generic, you know, is it a shrub, is it a tree type of situation? But the true species is now broadened on what you can utilize.
Yeah, it's very limited. E C B didn't like it.
Oh, yeah, oh, I thought it'd be the, I thought the. Don't take it out, well, if we can supplement it with something that's, and then we've been talking about that for.
And the species was that wasn't there also getting invasive in the grounds, so, I mean, they're staying here.
But didn't we have language to? Last approval that kind of solved that?
I'm sorry.
We did something in the last one that we changed the language. And the last one that we approved. So you better meet the needs of, of the request of E C D.
Oh, we can use the application?
That's the same one that we raised the transparency on.
Correct, yeah, it was the uptown project, I believe, and it was related to the invasive species, there was a condition in there stating it had to be removed. But that was a catch by the board.
But I thought we also did something more boilerplate in that one that covered the. Dreams and desires of E C P.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm talking for base code.
No, I know, the reason, but they, they took. They use that project to establish the transparency regulations and everything else. And that's what we've been trying to get to is a more of a rubber stamp on helping with the. Uh, landscaping items.
Yeah, we haven't worked on any of that this summer, we've had really large, uh, agendas. We're, we're averaging like ten, ten different issues in agenda for months now, so. It's a busy.
I know. Not to speak on behalf of the E C B or the planning department, but I know there was a big push. To have a true approved planning lists and everything else that's geared towards town accounted, I would, but to Kim's point, they, they were.
I thought we were close to approving. Victor, yeah.
Again, it's a, it should be, it could be a recommended, these are some good ideas for you, but the town, it does not have authority to require. One species over another without specific reason in specific cases, so, so. But I think the E C B should. Maybe that's not where they need to focus their energy, because we can't acquire, we can't mandate trees. We can, it's a guidance document that they're giving that guidance every time someone shows up anyway, so.
I, I think the intent was, whatever we adopt, making an appendix in the site design criteria.
Yeah, essentially.
Whether it's the victor, I like, you know, the victor is certainly. Yeah, we, we referred to that and said that would be a good model. And. Maybe when you do the site design again.
Again.
Close that some appendixes, again, uh, slow down, want to, uh.
Blow down.
Read and read, discuss this at our next meeting, or do you, okay? Alright, well, thanks for the, uh.
Thank you.
Overview, uh, thanks for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Believe me, I know how hard Murph and Kristen and staff worked on putting this thing together. It was quite a project. Uh. While we have you. And I know the applicant's not here, but. Can we go back to mobile road and all? You'll probably get a call from Mr. Vanessa tomorrow. We, we got your, we got your comments.
Don't put it, don't put Mike in that spot of not doing it in front of the.
Okay.
So I want to have it off the record, never to have it on the record.
We discussed it, let me put it that way, uh, okay, uh, we got minutes. We've got lots and lots of minutes, what's in the minutes from, uh, last week? And Green hustled and got them done and. Did a nice job on them, so, uh, somebody want to give the motion to, uh. Prove the minutes from, uh, November third, so. Okay, hold favor. Those. Yeah, we have no, there's a credit. Then else to look at? Uh. Project wise, we're pretty well. Said this, who's doing what, uh.
There's a lot of.
Said that we can kick this thing off in January.
So, so far, Bob, I think it's from there what Bob is working on.
Yep, and he sent a, uh.
A new version of that.
This is new version of his link front stage.
That's happening, Tim's been getting significantly more engaged in some of those topics as well, I did some, so I talked to him a little bit too much, it feels like. Miranda, we're still, Amanda, we're still, we're still trying to figure, sorry, and it isn't Miranda at work, I'm sorry.
I've never heard that one before.
We're, we're still trying to find the, uh, sweet spot. Or product for her, and, uh, you said you're busy. Uh, I have started looking through the comp plan just to make sure, um. When I look at the comp plan right now, as far as deliverables, we're doing okay on them, what we're. But we're not about, I shouldn't say we're not doing, but we don't have the ability to do anything on determine if we're making any headway. Because we don't have data on the things that the comp plan asked for. So I haven't really started to dig into that yet to determine. How we might get data or, I haven't even asked anybody for help, but that would probably be the next step for me to look at that and say. How do we measure? What we're trying to do.
Or check it off as being done.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm in, I'm anticipating if, after the first year, we might be asked to. Uh, provide what we're doing to, uh.
Oh, we owe a letter.
To the new board.
Aren't we supposed to? Aren't we supposed to do a letter every year?
Report.
Or report.
I think that was.
Do in October.
Well. I think.
What if you did one in December? Or, you know, to the new board, so that that's part of the thing that they see. Going forward, you know, at their organizational meeting. We don't have good this a lot.
December.
We can forget that we ever did it.
I think. I think in the rules and regulations that we have. For procedures, it's taken out, because, because. At the time, the board said that we were gonna have each committee and board in quarterly. To discuss, but that never happened.
We need another meeting.
So, yeah. There, there were group meetings of the boards and committees, but never. A board going to the town board or a committee going to town board and giving a report as to what they were doing. A board going to the town board or a committee going to town board and giving a report as to what they were doing. I mean, that was.
But, but in the treaty, I don't think.
Well, it meant, it meant the town board had to have a second meeting every month, and that got kiboshed. Yeah, remember, they were gonna do two meetings a month, one meeting was gonna be like a workshop.
Yeah.
And uh, didn't have, okay.
So we got a lot of stuff coming, if they've got time.
Yeah, we did. You know, she's coming, just trying to, trying to get her.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty, well, I think we ought to turn.
I'll, I'll take your motion then, Chuck.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, uh.